Tonight, tonight it is my pleasure to introduce to you two of the managers that work in human resources and risk management. I'm going to go ahead and introduce them at the same time, and then we can just sail through both of their presentations. First, you'll be hearing from Wendy Ritterizer, our benefits manager. Wendy has worked for the city for nearly five years, and I tell you if if I know her for one thing and one thing only, that is, is that she has worked hard to bring the best value of our benefits for the dollar that we spend on it. In every aspect of our benefits program, it has been a pleasure to work with Wendy. Some of you may know this already, but she will be joining the ranks of retirees in the middle of next month, and and we will be sad to see her go, but we will wish her well in her retirement adventures. Immediately following Wendy's presentation will be our risk manager, Kelsey Urban. Kelsey has worked for us for just about four years, it'll be four years next week. She works hard to adjust our claims in the fairest and most cost effective manner using the city's dollars. And I know that you'll be very interested in the information she also has to present this evening. And so with that, I will turn it over to Wendy. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Ellen, and it has been such a pleasure to work for the city of Renton. And I've just enjoyed my time here and and kind of torn to be wrapping it up, but retirement is is something I'm really looking forward to and excited about. I do want to share my screen. I think you all have the presentation. You should have a deck. Can everybody see the my screen and then also have their presentation themselves? Great. Okay, so we'll just jump right in. And because some of the members of council are fairly new, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than I have in prior years about the health plan and how it works. So the city's health insurance is we are self insured or self funded. And basically what that means is we budget the amount of money that we believe is going to cost our complete claims for the year. It goes into a fund and then our third party administrators pay the actual medical dental and vision and prescription claims out of that fund. So if the plan has higher than expected expenses, our reserves will go down. And if the plan has lower than expected expenses, reserves will go up. And we do have what is called stop loss or excess insurance coverage. And what that is, is is kind of similar to a very high deductible health plan. If any individual's claims go over a quarter of a million dollars in one year, then the city is no longer obligated to pay those claims, and instead our stop loss vendor pays those. As an alternative to the self funded plan that is administered through HMA, we offer Kaiser insurance, but very small number of our employees elect that. I think we have about a dozen. The plan, the self funded plan is governed by the Renton Employee Health Plan Board. And the voting members of that board are the chief administrative officer and the two union presidents. And that's listed in the Union Bargaining Unit Agreements, who the voting members are. And their role is to set plan design and set the contribution rates based on actuarial expectations and other expenses, and then also how much we have in reserves. Now, the premium cost share, once those rates are set, is divided between the city and the employees. The board doesn't have the authority to do that. That is approved by council in the individual bargaining unit agreements. And currently, the split is ninety one percent, nine percent. The city also offers life disability employee assistance flex plans and I think that's it. And those those are the additional benefits that we offer beyond the medical plan. Are there any questions on kind of the plan design and how that works? And I'll just invite people to jump in at any time if you have questions. The plan design changes that were made this last year were pretty minor. We added vision therapy for children, knee injections for any participants, and we added some cost saving measures. I have to say that the the board is very proactive on cost saving measures. We added a co-pay assistance program. There are some medical coupons that you can get from manufacturers for some very high cost drugs. And they pay a percentage of the employee's cost share. And so what we did is increased the cost share for employees on those really high cost brand name drugs with reliance on the coupon program. So the net effect to participants was often a decrease and or in some cases, a very small increase, but it has substantial savings for the plan. We also added cost for out of office visit if you use telemedicine, which is becoming so much more popular. And then we aligned out of network ambulance services within network and decreased the hearing aid benefit frequency. So not a lot of changes, but and as I said, the board looks carefully at what the projected cost impact would be before making a change in the plan design. The expenses and premiums and the way that they changed this year, the board, the council approved a 4.2% increase with HMA, a 5.2% increase with Kaiser, and a very difficult 50% increase in stop loss. As you'll hear from Kelsey as well, the insurance market is very difficult. And everybody is seeing pretty dramatic increases. Now, a 50% increase in stop loss sounds, I mean, it is a lot. But stop loss premiums are thankfully a very small portion of our planning expenses, so it didn't have a very high overall impact. Now, the board sets the premiums, and the premiums are the amount of insurance that the city and the employees pay to be on this plan. And the increase in medical was 4.8%, dental three and vision just over half of a percent. So you can see that even though HMA was a 4.2, we had to increase 4.8 to absorb those additional stop loss costs. And in the other benefits, we had no changes this year. Claims overview. So when we compare the amount of money that we set for premiums that the city and the employees put in every month compared to the amount of money we spent on claims, we had a 99.8% gross ratio, which means for every dollar we all put into the plan, we had expenses of 99.8 cents, so remarkably close to the projections. However, stop loss does reimburse us for anyone who went over $250,000 in total eligible expenses. So that brought our claims ratio down to 93.2. So what that means is that about 7% or 6.8% of all the money that we put in built reserves because we didn't need that for expenses. On stop loss, we had four claimants and reimbursements for $882,000. So those are the people who went over the quarter of a million dollars, and you can see the comparison to last year. Pharmacy, as I mentioned, I mean, it's a big expense, and it's becoming a larger and larger piece of the pie. And that's why we're working hard to try to keep those pharmacy expenses down by taking advantage of manufacturers coupons. We're also looking at the possibility of a narrower network on pharmacies. If our employees go to different pharmacies, a variety of pharmacies that are available to them, some pharmacies charge higher rates to the plan than others. So even though the co-pay for the employee is exactly the same, $10, $25, what the plan pays can be significantly different depending on which pharmacy they go to. So we are working with the board on options for incentivizing our employees to go to the lower cost pharmacies and providing education about those, which pharmacies charge more and less, and then perhaps having a co-pay differential so that the employees can be good consumers of the healthcare spend. For dental and vision, you can see that for every dollar we put into the dental plan, we spent 87 and a half cents. And for every dollar envisioned in the vision plan, 98.2. And so if those numbers are ever over 100, it means we would draw down our reserves a little bit. And we'll look at reserves in just a minute. So this next screen shows us time year over year, how much we've spent. And this is per employee per month. So you can see clear back, would that be 11 years ago? We spent about $1,200 a month per employee, and now it's 16, about 1650. So it is definitely increased over time, as I'm sure you're aware, all health insurance does. But from 2014 to today, you can see that the costs really haven't increased significantly. The city of Renton's trend over time is significantly below the national average on our increases. And part of the reason for that, we can look at our employees are very engaged and good consumers of the healthcare spend. And then I didn't, I don't think I included it in this deck, but our employees also are very active in proactive in screenings, health screenings, compliance with things like diabetes medication and those types of things. So that's helpful. This is how the financials did last year. So I talked about the amount that we put in our expected claims were 12 million, so about a million dollars a month. And our target reserves are 40%. We want to always have 40% of the year's expected expenses in our reserve account, so that would be $5 million. In 2021, we look at the reserve balance at the beginning of the year. What we brought in, what we paid out, what we got back from stop loss and the reserves at the end of the year. So you can see that it went up by 836,000. So our reserves are sitting at about 48%. And with our target being a minimum of 40% of about a million dollars more than we would require in our target. And then drilling into what those reserves look like, this is a chart that shows what our reserve balance is. So every bar here is what the balance is each month. And the legal requirement for the state under WAC is that we have 30% in reserves. The city chooses to hold closer to 40% because as you can see, it can be volatile, and we don't want to dip below that level. And you can see how the rates have increased and decreased. Here's our target of 40. Here's the minimum of 30. You can see that each year when the new projections come in for the expenses for the following year, that jumps up a bit. And you can see where we ended the year. This is a rate holiday. You'll probably remember the fact that the city, when we were very concerned at the beginning of COVID, about loss of revenue to the city and budget shortfalls, we happen to have had more money than was necessary in our reserves. So we declared a rate holiday where employees didn't deposit, didn't pay any premiums, but neither did the city. So it saved the city about $800,000, and it brought down our reserves closer to where we'd like it to be. So it was a good time for us to be able to to do that. And it is a common practice that the city, if our reserves build too high over time, that we would have a rate holiday. Now, the other way around, if our reserves drop below what we need to have, we would have to have a mid year premium increase. So that's what I have for an update on the health plan. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Wendy, and congratulations on your retirement. Do we have any questions for for Wendy? If not, we can roll on to Kelsey, and we can, I'm sure we can always come back if there's more questions at the end.
Actually, I do have one more section. I'm going to talk about our deferred comp retirement plan, and then Kelsey will talk about risk.
My apologies, yes.
No worries. So that was the health plan. Now, we also have a deferred compensation plan. So in addition to the pension plan that's run through the state, the city operates, it's called a 457B deferred compensation plan. It is a multi employer plan between the city and the RFA, the Renton Regional Fire Authority. When the RFA branched off, we looked at the expenses of running two separate plans, and it would have cost us more. And we wanted to have the exact same plan. We were both happy with how it was running. So we have a cooperative agreement with the RFA, and we continue to manage this plan jointly with the RFA. In the plan, there is a committee that are the named fiduciaries for the committee. And fiduciaries select the investment options, monitor those options, negotiate fees with the vendors and the record keepers, and are required to ask, act in the solely in the best interest of the participants. There's a really high legal bar for fiduciaries on a retirement plan. And the council names the voting members and the RFA names their voting members. So the council previously named the chief administrative officer, the HRRM administrator, and the administrative services administrator. And then the RFA named the fire chief. So those are the four voting members. The committee meets quarterly. We do welcome employees and have excellent attendance by the unions and also some non represented employees. And we maintain our due diligence with a co-fiduciary. So the bar and the standard for fiduciaries of this plan is to act as a prudent expert. And if you don't have the expertise to be a prudent expert, then you must hire someone. And so the city has a co-fiduciary that we use to help us make the best choices and understand what is happening in the market. They do regular analysis of how our investments are doing and search for replacement funds when appropriate and make recommendations to the board. So the investment options that we have, we're required to have an array based on risk characteristics. And the portfolio that we have are target date funds, that's the default investment. And those are funds where an individual invests based on the approximate year they would plan to retire. And then those investments are managed, they happen to be managed by Vanguard. So they are managed and they change their risk portfolio over time as the person gets closer to retirement. That's the default, and that's where the majority of the new money from our participants is going in. We also offer core funds in each of the broad investment categories. And then for a brokerage window for people who really want to go out and buy individual stock, very few people take advantage of that, but it is an option. One of the things that I'm very proud of is the fact that our fees and expenses are low for the plan. The board has control over what investments we will offer and how we negotiate fees and expenses. And you can see that a benchmark, which is the composite benchmark of plans, not just governmental plans, but private industry as well, of our size, the overall fees are just over a half of a percent. And you can see what the city RFA fund fees are and how they've been coming down over time. As we continue to grow, we can negotiate lower fees and expenses and take advantage of options for keeping those fees as low as possible. The fees are paid by the participants drawn out of their accounts on a quarterly basis. And so this is really saving money for the participants so that their accounts can grow more quickly. Our plan grew by about 12% last year. And contributions are up about 8% with the prior year. People are saving more. We do outreach and education to participants on the importance of saving for retirement and their investment options. You can see that once people leave employment, they often keep their money in the plan. If they're taking another job elsewhere, a lot of times they'll just decide to keep their money in the city's plan as well. They can roll it to their new employer. And if they've retired, they can draw it down over time during their retirement. So do you have any questions about the deferred compensation plan?
Okay, are there any questions? I'm not seeing any hands raised at the moment. So in light of that, I'm inclined to move on. I did think of one question from the pre, the first half. And that was, sorry, to go back to the the excess in reserves, the 30% being the minimum and the 40% being the actual. Is there a ceiling at a level where we would declare declare that rate holiday? Or is that kind of just determined as as needed, like you said, it was a good time before? So I just don't know. Is there an actual like threshold we would we would decide that on?
We we look at it at the midpoint of each year. And through we can do modeling to say if we had a rate holiday for one pay period, two pay periods, et cetera, how far would it bring it down? We actually just had a board meeting, and if we had a one month rate holiday, it would bring us down to 40.5%. So it's not, so we we don't have an exact amount that triggers it. It's at the board's discretion. We do get advice from finance and HR to the board. And so far since I've been here, it's been a very collaborative relationship. The city, so so in answer to your question, we look at it at least twice a year and model if we had a rate holiday, where would it bring us? And so unless the funding is enough to do that and not dip below the 40%, we would hold off on that.
Great, thank you. I see Councilmember Albertson has his hand raised. Go ahead.
Yes, Wendy, it's not a question. I just want to say, I feel compelled to say, that was an excellent job on both on both presentations. I looked at the everything, and even though it was clear, it is crystal clear. So hey, if you're retiring, you may as well drop the mic. That was fantastic.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right. I wish I had a mic to give you to drop. All right, so we can move on to Kelsey at this point then.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more about Wendy and her presentation. She sets a high standard. I am going to share my screen, and I would love confirmation after I do this, that I have done it correctly. So let me start sharing. Are you guys seeing the correct view without? All right, okay. So it's my pleasure to take you through and review our 2021 spend from the insurance fund, the 502 insurance fund. Again, I'm Kelsey Urban, the risk manager. And I like to start off by looking at the big picture. How much are we talking about when we refer to the 502 fund? And last year was about 3.9 million. It was low in 2020, but typically year over year, the trend is about the same. There are four main buckets of categories of either expenditure or money going into the fund, which is number four on this list. And I'm going to take us through each one of these four buckets and categories. The first one is claims cost. Then premiums for excess insurance, as well as our insurance coverage. Administrative expenses, including litigation, and the last one is subrogation, again, going into the 502 fund. So for claims and losses, quite a few categories here, workers' compensation. These are 2021 self insured retentions that you see on the screen here, and they have changed for 2022. So last year, we had a half a million dollars in our worker's compensation, self insured retention going up to that level, and then excess insurance beginning above that level. Liability was a quarter of a million dollars. An auto liability, the same 250,000 for our SIR. And then property crime, cyber, physical automobile damage, all are straight insurance. And they all, any claims are paid out from the 502 insurance fund up to those amounts. For workers' compensation, that is managed by both benefits and risk management, although it does come from this fund. Benefits works with our third party administrator. The company's name is Everly Vivian, and they process and manage our workers' compensation claims. And this is a 100% employer paid benefit. To give you an idea of the costs and the number of claims that we see for the workers' compensation portion of these claims. Last year, $625,000 was the cost and roughly exactly 30 claims. Unemployment also out of the 502, that's managed by the labor division within HR, and it's also 100% employer paid. This graph gives you an idea of some trends year over year. You'll notice 2020 was very high when it came to the costs from unemployment claims. That was related to the pandemic and separation that we had about 100 claims that year and some separation of supplemental employees last year, 2021, just under $60,000, which is more consistent with previous years and 31 claims. For property claims and losses, again, we have a straight insurance policy on this and a deductible of $50,000. Risk management manages those losses. And overall, to give some idea, we do have over $356 million in property that is insured by our insurance account. The losses each year are low coming out of the 502. So last year, it was just over $102,000 for property losses. And I do want to mention that's not all inclusive. We do have some auto losses that come out of the 501 account. And additionally, some divisions and departments account for and budget for some losses that are are regular. Liability is another large category of loss and claim payment. We again have that self insured retention up to $250,000 and excess insurance above that. And that again, that has changed. So this year, 2022, it is up to 300,000. That's managed by risk management. Some of the liability claims that we might see include bodily injury, property damage, auto, and less common, but high visibility when we do receive these civil rights violations. We have a strong partnership with our city attorney, and we work closely with with the city attorney's office for claims that might become cases and go into litigation lawsuits. This will give you an idea of how many liability claims we have per year. It used to average about 70, but you'll notice that number came down. We had low numbers in 2020 due to the pandemic. And now our yearly average is about 67.3 in 2021. Last year, we had 60 claims. This pie graph gives you an idea of how many of the losses are by department number of claims. So this is by number of claims. So public works with the majority of the claims at 55% and police at 30%. CET and community service have some slice in the pie, but a smaller amount. We settle about 30 to 40% of claims each year, which gives you a rough estimation of claims that for which were liable. Last year, it was a little higher at 42% that we paid out or settled. Approximately half of each of the claims that we settle, or rather, the claims that we receive have an automobile involved. And this might include a person driving over a pothole where their vehicle sustained damage. The percent below that, that you'll see the 22% is when a city vehicle was involved in a motor vehicle accident, so MVA motor vehicle accident. Those were claims by number. This is the cost of claims to give us a different perspective. Last year in 2021, you'll notice that we did have more cost. So we paid out $523,215. We did have one large settlement that was a result of a mediation, and the cost was 300,000 in that settlement alone. We also did receive reimbursement from our excess insurer in the amount of 100 and about 104,000. So we did have some of that cost reimbursed. And it does vary year to year. As you can see, there isn't necessarily a pattern here. Some years when we have suffered larger losses, we do see larger amounts. So that was the first bucket. The second bucket of use for the 502 fund is the premiums themselves. And we carry a full line of coverage for the city to protect our assets. You'll notice that liability insurance is a very, there are several subcategories of liability insurance that we purchase. Big ones being general, auto, public officials, airport, cyber pollution, stopgap, which Wendy mentioned, law enforcement. We also have lines of coverage for property, auto, physical damage, workers' compensation, drone, et cetera. auto, physical damage, workers' compensation, drone, et cetera. The biggest costs for these premiums are in the categories of our property insurance and our liability insurance, as you might predict. So 2021, we saw a very large increase in the cost of our premiums for property insurance, 35%, which is very, very large. Um, there's the, I, there isn't much good news in that other than compared to others, we fared well. We did not have losses in our property category, large losses, where we went through our insurance. So in that way, the city did benefit. Um, it is almost exclusively due to the hardening of the insurance market and which is a result of extreme weather in general and across the nation. For liability insurance premiums, we saw a similar pattern. Unfortunately, this is just that one category of general excess liabilities. We do have other policies that are not included in the amounts that you see. They did go up from 2020 to 2021 for general excess liability, 20%, which is very large. And so we, we spent just under $400,000 on that line of coverage. The third bucket that comes out of the 502 insurance fund is administrative expenses, including our broker fees for Alliant. Our broker fees for the Claims Management Service that we, we use, the name of the company is Carl Warren Company. There are some cost savings here. Risk management does, uh, it last year handled 87% of the claim, claim adjustments in-house and 13% went to our TPA. Litigation defenses unfortunately were very high as well. Last year in 2021, we saw over $124,000 in defense costs, hiring outside attorneys for several cases. We did resolve two cases last year, including the one that we talked, that we briefly mentioned, the $300,000 settlement in mediation. We have seven claims or cases rather in pre-litigation or litigation that remain open. And then lastly, for administrative expenses, investing in our safety and the tools that we, tools, training, resources that we give to our employees are always a positive investment. And then the last and the final category is again, the one that comes into the account. I wish it were the same large scale of numbers that we see going the other direction. Um, and this, the number that you see averages about $100,000 per year of collections that we're able to get from damage to city property and vehicles. So recovering those when we have those responsible parties and recollecting those back for the city. And that is managed by our risk management analyst, Krista Colas, who has done an excellent job taking this program and, and really making it viable, taking it to the next level. Again, on average, 100,000 that we collect each year. And last year we collected 111,510. Some quick additional information for you, as you do know, and worth stating again, six years ago, now over six years ago, we did exit being self-insured through the risk pool, WCIA, Washington Cities Insurance Association, um, and became fully self-insured on our own. Um, that has been going very well. We still continue to save about $200,000 each year in administrative costs as well as our costs for the premiums. Um, we are, because our loss history is excellent for the city of Renton, we have premium savings as well. We have greater control over our liability claim process as well as the litigation outcomes. It does involve more work out of our city attorney's office as well as, of course, out of risk management. So it's a more active, engaged process for us being fully self-insured and managing each one of these programs in-house. Um, and with that, again, key to those savings that we see, that $200,000 each year is making sure that we are managing the process as well. We're investing in our employees and their safety and having solid risk strategies and great coverages, which I'm proud that we do. Top concerns, this is my last slide, worth mentioning each year that areas of liability that do remain, we have found at this point that COVID-19 does not carry a huge liability exposure for the city, which is positive news. Um, the aging subsurface infrastructure is one that is being managed through Public Works Administrator specifically to make sure that we are proactively addressing some of the aging infrastructure. Police liability, joint and several liability, and our public records violations are some of the top areas for exposure for risk. With that, may I ask, uh, answer any questions for you?
Thank you, Kelsey. I see, I already see one hand raised, and that's Councilmember Halloran. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you, Kelsey. Very comprehensive and easy to follow. I, I do have a question on slide number six, which is the workers' compensation claims.
Hmm hmm.
And if, if you wouldn't mind, can you pull that back up again really quickly?
Yes.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you so much. So I noticed a kind of a pattern here that in 2020 and 2021, we have fewer claims, but substantially higher cost of those claims, and especially 2021 is dramatically lower claims than the preceding, you know, 18 and 19 specifically, but substantially higher in, in the, the expense that we're paying out. Can you, can you help me understand how that happens?
Well, I want to get you a good thorough answer. So if it's all right with you, I would love to get back to you on that, or perhaps Wendy might be able to jump in and help. This is the, um, the program that is managed by the benefits division within HR. Okay. I would want to make sure I get you the right answer. I imagine there might be something to do with the, um, the pay of the employee who is, who is separated.
Okay. Um, thank you. You can stop.
I apologize. Forget my last statement, but I will stop share.
Okay.
Think I just misspoke, but uh, um, story still applies about getting that, that answer for you, if that would work for you.
Yeah, and, and just, um, you can respond to the entire council. That would be fun.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good question. I had a similar thought looking at that slide as well. Additional questions from council? All right. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I thank you, Kelsey, and thank you to Ellen and Wendy as well. So before I move on, just one more congrats to, to Wendy on her retirement. So you didn't have to pick the mic back up. That's good. And do, I've, I've loved hearing the, you know, the, seeing that the savings every year on, on risk management on the, since we don't self-insure. So that's always, always a good sign to see, even when we face other challenges in, in the market on rates. So thank you all very much. And at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Christie and Jason to talk about the upgrades to council chambers.
Thank you, Council President McGurven, and welcome other council members. I am Christie Rowland, you're a DCAO and administrator of the Executive Services Department, of which Jason Seth, who you all are very familiar with, is part of, and he'll be sharing about the AV and broadcasting upgrade to your chambers project. But I just wanted to just lead off a little bit with the why. Um, the pandemic, as you know, forced us to expand our capabilities rather rapidly. And on top of some very old equipment, some of which is actually not working even tonight. And unfortunately, we learned that right before we went on. So illustrating the point of this investment, we need to modernize and be ready for what's next. So getting us around the corner and being able to provide a professional welcoming, welcoming experience to the community and no matter what the future holds. So that is the why behind this investment. You've already approved this project. Um, Jason's going to give you the rundown about timeline and what to expect. And I ask a couple of questions that you can think about in terms of when you are going to return to the council chambers and what that might look like. So you might discuss that tonight, or you can save that for the retreat. We'll leave that up to you. Just wanted to give you all the information you might need to answer those questions among yourselves. So with that, I will turn it over to Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie, and you're going to share your screen for us, please? Okay, perfect. So my name is Jason Seth, of course, and as your city clerk, uh, you know, I help run these council meetings with you. And as Christie mentioned, we're just going to go over what this project is about. And so Christie, next slide, please. So as Christie mentioned, uh, we actually had a equipment failure, uh, probably 30 seconds before the meeting started. And so, uh, the, the, most of the equipment in here is over 17 years old. It's, uh, could be even older. That's how long I've worked here and it's not been updated. Uh, and some of the equipment obviously doesn't operate correctly, uh, including some of the monitors on the dais. Uh, they're, they sometimes displaying black and white. And so I just want to make sure that, uh, the council chambers is going to look more professional when you come back. And so that includes, and we'll go over all the equipment, but, uh, this new project will essentially create an audio, visual and broadcasting network that all the equipment will be tied into. And so, uh, there's going to be new, uh, monitors, new uh, speakers and microphones and, uh, new broadcasting equipment, new digital displays. So we'll get through all that as, as we go along. So next product, or next slide, please. So the project funding is Christie mentioned, council approved this on January 24th. Uh, the total budget authorized is $326,000, isn't change. And as you know, uh, or may not know, uh, the funding actually comes from Fund 127, which is our public educational and governmental fund. Uh, this fund is accessed via a fee to residents, uh, franchise, their Comcast bill, essentially a small portion. Uh, 2019, it was about 88 cents per subscriber to Comcast. And we've been collecting this fees for years and have a significant budget in there. And so this just seemed like a good time to use that funding to do this upgrade. Uh, next slide, please. So the contractor is a company called Avidex Industries LLC. They were awarded a state contract for audio and video solutions, which we are essentially piggybacking on to the state contract for this contract. Uh, they, uh, they have been in business for about 17 years. Uh, they've done some upgrades for the Sumner Council Chamber, Chambers, the Bering Council Chambers, and Redmond City Hall. When they built that city hall, uh, they wired it, uh, with Avidex, got that contract to do all of their AV solutions. Uh, one of the things too that they have that's not on the slide here is, uh, what they call their 360-degree service plan. And part of the contract cost was a one-year warranty for essentially every piece of equipment that, uh, is going to be upgraded in here. And so in that service plan, we can extend that if needed. Next slide, please. So what's changing, as Christie mentioned, uh, you know, the future, we want to be, uh, ready for any emergency, any new technology, anything that comes our way. And right now the aging equipment in here makes it very difficult, uh, even to host a hybrid meeting. Uh, and so we want to establish a seamless transition from in-person to hybrid in-person virtual meetings. Uh, this is beneficial because when the governor's proclamation, uh, ends, right? There's new state legislation that will require that we have the ability to go virtual during future emergencies, uh, especially when meeting in person is not practical. And that, uh, we've learned that it's also removed barriers and increased accessibility for residents to attend and participate council meetings. All right, next slide, please. So this is the slide that's got the most information on this slide. And I'll just start, you know, so we are updating the audio, visual and broadcasting, uh, components and also a few extras. And so, uh, there's going to be 15 new wireless mics, a new, new handheld mics with a lavalier system, uh, which will help during like non-council meetings, if we have guest speakers and that kind of thing. Uh, they, there'll be new speakers overhead and the speakers will be set up in a way, uh, through, and they're going to be over a network, which will reduce, uh, the, uh, what do you call it? When, uh, I lost the word.
Feedback.
Yeah, it'll reduce feedback, uh, especially in this hybrid environment where we have different computers, a different people. You know, some people online, some people not online. Uh, some of the testing we did earlier this year, we did have some issues with feedback. So these new speakers will, uh, be on a, uh, a network system. And so the radio frequency of the regular speakers should reduce feedback. Uh, also the, uh, the speakers above the dais uh, will be set at a lower volume because as we sit here on the dais, we can hear. But they get progressively louder towards the back of the council chambers, which will, uh, help people hear better while they're in person here. Uh, we're also including press boxes, which is where the media can tap in to the audio signal, uh, if they happen to be broadcasting from uh, council chambers. We're going to be adding a second one and updating the technology to more modern connections, that kind of thing. And, uh, I think one of the, uh, best upgrades, in my opinion, is, uh, what they call a BYOD, Bring Your Own Device App for individuals that are hard of hearing or have hearing, uh, issues. Essentially what it does is it allows people to use their, their cell phone, an app on their phone to tap into the wireless audio feed, uh, so that it can through Bluetooth technology, uh, go directly into their hearing aids. And as somebody who is, uh, uh, hearing impaired, I use this feature a lot with my hearing aids. And so, uh, but it's important to note too, that the federal requirement for ADA assistive lis- listening devices uh, has not kind of caught up with technology. And so we still have the older devices, which is essentially, essentially an amplifier with headphones uh, that we can now offer to people if they were in person here. And so we're just trying to create a, uh, the ability for people to use new technology. And then the, uh, for visual, uh, there's where the old projector system, I don't know if you could see behind me, but there used to be a, uh, a pull-down screen and kind of an old school overhead projector kind of thing. All of that's going to go away. We're going to go to the large 86-inch 4K monitor. Uh, on the dais, there's going to be new 22-inch 4K monitors. Uh, there's going to be a 65-inch digital display, uh, near the door. That's going to, it's basically a digital signage display. There'll be a new document camera for people who do want to come in and have flyers or things that they want to present to council. But additionally, there'll be a, a Bring Your Own Device technology that will allow, uh, individuals to receive a code from the uh, clerk's seat at the dais, uh, to join the video signal so that they can essentially present from their cell phone or their laptop. There'll be no need for trying to figure out which wire can connect to the right thing. Uh, we'll be able to do it all wirelessly. Uh, the old, uh, 65-inch, uh, monitors that face towards the audience will be upgraded. And we're adding another monitor above the lectern that faces council that will also display the signal of, uh, whatever videos we are, uh, projecting at the time. Uh, there'll be a touchscreen, about a 10-inch, uh, touchscreen, uh, to help, uh, manage, you know, where the signal goes and that kind of thing. And then, uh, the video booth, I don't know if you're aware, but be, uh, at the back of the, uh, council chambers. And I say this because some of the council, I don't think has even had an opportunity to sit at the dais yet. But at the back of chambers, there is a, uh, window, and behind that window is our video booth. And we have a videographer back there who manages the, uh, broadcast as it's happening. He manipulates, he or she manipulates cameras and make sure that they, uh, you know, are focused on the right person. Well, all of that equipment back there is going to be upgraded. There's going to be new cameras. Uh, that's all network-based. Uh, we're getting a new broadcasting platform called New Tech Tricaster. And it's essentially run like an app. And so, uh, over the next couple of weeks, I'm working with the vendor to, uh, program that app and determine which cameras, point where, and that kind of thing. And, uh, the, uh, there are, there's one large video screen back there and then a couple there are, there's one large video screen back there and then a couple of computers. And so essentially, that's all going to be cleaned up. We'll have a new computer, a few new monitors and make it easier for the videographer to be able to manage the meeting while it's in progress. And then our broadcasting server, it too has not been updated in about 20 years or more. And that's the server that pushes our signal out to channel 21, which is not working currently. And so that upgrade should fix all of these kind of problems. And it will basically bring it up to modern standards. And then additionally, we include a portable teleprompter for offsite meetings and ceremonies. Now, some of the extras over in the seven floor conferencing center, and some of some of you who have been in there know that when you're sitting at the table, the monitors are behind you if you're on the west side of the table. And so a lot of times you have to kind of look over your shoulder to kind of see those monitors. We're adding a monitor to the column that's on the east wall. The window wall, there's a monitor, there is a column, and it's about a 50 inch television that'll fit on there. And we're also raising the televisions up that are on the west wall so that when you sit in the chairs below them, you're not as likely to bump your head on them. There'll also be Bring Your Own Device technology in there so that people can do the assisted listening or the presenting. So staff could essentially just come up, get the code and present from their phone or their iPad or their, you know, laptop, that kind of thing. And there'll be a touch panel. I think one of the biggest things is that this is all going to be network based. And so there'll just be one little flat screen where everything kind of goes into and then whoever's running the meeting can essentially program which signal source is going to which monitors, much easier than the current system that's set up in there now. And then the final thing is a mobile production cart. This cart is essentially a flat screen, a computer, and it has, as long as it's got tied into our internet here at City Hall, we can essentially broadcast a meeting from anywhere in City Hall. And the reason why this was important is because there've been incidents lately for a couple of agencies where they've had to shut down meetings in the middle, like council meetings in the middle of the meeting to for safety reasons, to go to other rooms. And this will allow us to move to another room and continue the meeting. It's also good for staff because we can use that production cart for other meetings and that kind of thing. So next slide, Christie. So the project timeline. So back in September, we started soliciting vendors. By January, we had selected a vendor, worked through all the contract process and and got the contract awarded to Avidex Industries. That was at January 24th council meeting. We also had to do some coordination with facilities because they have to install a few electrical things and some some patch and drywall kind of stuff. And so facilities team has been great. Jeff's team has been awesome helping us out here. In February, we had a few pre-construction meetings. The contractor's submittals are essentially all the paperwork, make sure they were you know, had everything they needed. Then we continued and they started purchasing parts. And so we're here, you know, mid March. I have that question. Council returns to chambers in April, maybe. And construction should begin on April 18th. We expect it to be mostly complete by the end of May and all of the paperwork and the final acceptance of the job, all that by the end of June. However, next slide, please. Oh, I guess we'll talk about that in a second. Oh, do I have it together? I do, sorry. So we have, just like everything else, we have had some supply chain issues. It's mostly affecting the wireless microphones. These microphones are pretty high tech. They have a little speaker on them. They have a voting technology that we may or may not turn on, you know, until everybody's comfortable with it. But we don't expect those until mid May. We have had the vendor out here to kind of inventory and make sure that the existing microphones we have will work with the new system. So they they have done that. They've confirmed that they can get them to work. The digital signage player device, there's no estimated shipping date for that. We'll have the monitor, the television that'll be installed and ready to go. We just don't have the device. But I have learned today from IT that there may be some alternatives and we may be able to use some digital signage devices that I believe they have at the golf course and a few other buildings. And then the touch panel devices are also probably not going to be in until June. But there is an alternative where we can load that to an iPad for now and and use it that way. Okay, so for council's consideration here, back in March 15th, 2021, we adopted Resolution 4427, which essentially made our reoccurring Zoom webinar, the location of the council meeting. And that's because the governor's emergency proclamation required us to provide a way to do that for the members of public staff and and council. So because of the pandemic, of course, council's remote attendance policy 813 doesn't currently align with that. So one of our recommendations is that council review this policy at its upcoming council retreat. Just to make sure that, you know, maybe you want to leave it the way it is currently. The process, it was essentially adopted in 2015, updated in 2018. It was created to ensure that there was a forum of council present so that city business could be conducted. All right. So it's written in a way that any council member can essentially indicate to the council liaison that they're willing to join a council meeting virtually. If there's a threat of a lack of forum, the council president will make that determination and and basically direct the council liaison to start calling down the list to see if somebody can attend telephonically. That's how it was set up to just basically go on the telephone and ensure that we have a forum so that we can conduct the city business that needs to be done without having to council a meeting or reschedule a meeting. Excellent. All right. And so some of the impacts to in chamber meetings is you know, some of the parts and supplies are essentially, they're going to be delivered here on April 11th. We don't really have anywhere to store them, so they're going to be stored in chambers. And construction begins the next week. We expect it to be about three to four weeks for installation. But there's another little hiccup too, where when the old cameras are decommissioned, there may be a week between the before they get the new cameras installed. And so we and like I mentioned before, the wireless microphones won't be ready until at least May 23rd. So we do expect a transition period essentially between the 11th of April and May 23rd, where it it's just, there's a little too many unknowns to know exactly what process we could do to host in person meetings. But go ahead, next slide, please, Christie. So basically, we are preparing the existing equipment to conduct hybrid meetings. And so if you notice the there should be a camera picture. I can't see it right now, but of it says council chambers. And you can see me sitting here at the dais. That essentially, we have like a static camera that can show what's happening. So if people were to come in. But during that couple of weeks when the cameras are down, we may have to go back to virtual meetings temporarily, or we can use the chambers, but we can't really broadcast on channel 21. And then I've learned that there is a webcam over at the seven floor conferencing center. So we could also do a virtual hybrid meeting over in there, but that room is not set up to broadcast on channel 21. And so as we mentioned, we'll be transitioning to new equipment as it comes in and train staff on use of the new equipment. But I want to emphasize, there really is no training required for council. When we want the experience for council, when you come back to essentially be the way it was before, but you'll have nice new monitors, you know, nice equipment, and it will look a lot more professional in here.
Jason, I want to let you know that Councilmember Perez has her hand raised for a question.
Okay, Councilmember Perez.
I can wait until you finish your presentation. Thank you.
I was just going to go on you too.
I have one. The next slide is the last slide. So so next steps for council is to discuss either today or at the council retreat. You know, when you may want to return based on all the information that I just provided and consider updating the policy to either align it with today's virtual attendance or figure out other options. So and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And as I see, we already have one question. Councilmember Perez, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. If may I have three quick, three quick questions?
That's that's fine with me as long as we, I think we have, yeah, we should have time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Currently on the dais, we don't have a way to charge our iPads. If we want to charge our iPads, we need to bring a mobile device. Is there a way to add something that we can plug in our iPads necessary to charge them?
I will ask the vendor and see if we have a possible change order to add some electrical outlets on the dais. I'm not sure. It was not included with the original ask, but I can talk to them about that.
I remember that we have that asked four years ago, but I don't know, it was too complicated to do it. And nothing moved forward because for some reason we don't have energy outlets there.
Yeah, well, I can, I was not aware of the ask from back then, but
Thank you.
I can look into that.
Thank you. With the new monitors, currently we can see on the monitors whatever is broadcast on the channel 21, blow or change it to whatever is on the presentations. Are we going to have access to more, to something else or yes, the monitors are going to be?
So the new system, whatever is being displayed will be broadcast. And so there'll be no need to switch back and forth any longer. So it'll be integrated. The presentation will be integrated into the into the video feed essentially. And so they'll same with the hybrid. Like essentially, you'll just come and sit down and then the cameras are connected to the Zoom meeting directly. And so there'll be, there'll be no need to switch camera feeds any longer.
So the monitor will be showing whatever is broadcast to channel 21.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the last question that I was going to ask is the ordinance, did we make an emergency ordinance at the beginning of 2020 to be able to go to have meetings?
There was a previous one. We updated it when actually when Judith took over for Julia because our Zoom account, I know this is kind of administrative stuff, but our Zoom account could not be transferred. And so Judith had to start a new reoccurring webinar. And so we had to update the resolution to include that meeting. You know, meeting information. And so, yes, we did back in, I believe, at the very end of March of 2020. And we updated again when Judith was hired as the new council liaison.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great questions. We have about 10 ish more minutes left if we have additional questions. Or the other thing we can do obviously is kind of discuss those as was laid out, the next steps for council to our potential return date. And while I think it was really intended for the retreat, certainly we can sort of hash out a little bit that virtual attendance policy. Councilmember Halloran, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm curious, Jason, if you have any sense of if we do come back in person you know, prior to to like say, the beginning of April, will our presence impact the timing of this project? I mean, will they have to stop doing some things because now you got to accommodate for council being there? And so you two steps backwards and then you got to hook everything back up again Tuesday morning. I mean, is there any impact to the to the project if we come back in person?
I think there'll be more of an impact to the council meeting than the council impacting the project. And so what I mean by that is that the equipment will be here. And so it'll it won't look very nice when you come back. Some of the monitors may be missing. Some of the equipment maybe not installed correctly. They can work around our schedule, but they, you know, it would be pretty difficult to remove equipment, put it back, remove it, put it back, that kind of thing. And so so I think the impact would be more the project affecting how our council meetings appear. Especially when they remove the cameras and before we get the new cameras and the new because we can put new cameras up, but we still have to turn on the new broadcasting platform. We have to train staff on how to use that platform. And so there could be a few weeks where we're not broadcasting. And I and I do want to make it clear, it's not required to broadcast on channel 21 or post our videos on YouTube. We, you know, in the old days, we would save a copy of the video to a CDR or a DVD or whatever. And it would just be in storage in the clerk's office until somebody requested a copy. You know, we were broadcast live during the meeting, but but it isn't, it isn't technically required. And having, one of the other things we have to do too is develop quickly a plan to allow in person attendance. And with equipment laying around and that kind of thing, it may be difficult to have people here. It's it's doable, though. I mean, we can make it work for you. We, you know, if that's the direction for council, then we, you know, we will make that happen. And so we could you know, find alternative places to store the equipment, that kind of thing. But I think the biggest impact is that if you came back, let's say, April 4th, April 11th, or probably April 18th meeting, we may have to go back to virtual for a few meetings and then come back in again. And so it really is kind of, that's why we're seeking direction essentially, trying to provide you with the most information we can so we can get a to get direction from you. But we, I just want you to know that we will make sure that we'll do whatever it takes to no matter what that direction is.
Well, and I just, I wanted to just say that the reason I stated the question the way I did is I assumed disruption to council meetings, but I wanted to make sure that the that the council meetings aren't going to be a burden on the project. So that's why, that's why I worded the question that way. So thank you very much.
Yeah, so we would, we would make sure they work around you.
Thank you. Good question and helpful information for answer as far as is a good prompt for our discussion in terms of determining that date. So additional questions or strong opinions on a potential return date, given that information to in person? Councilmember Perez.
Sorry, sorry. Jason, are we ready to to have a hybrid meetings, meaning some council members and Zoom and some council members on the dais? Because I know that that presents some sort of difficulty. If we come back, do we all have to come back, the seven of us, or can be the choice?
It can be, it's up to you. As you see the camera, that's essentially what would be seen at home, the council chambers camera that you see now. That is what you would see. It would be a static shot. We do have the opportunity, the ability to zoom in on each speaker as they speak, but it's one camera. It's only one camera that we're able to feed into the Zoom in our current technology. And so there could be some delay, you know, if the mayor is speaking and then somebody speaks up, there could be a little delay before the camera gets over to them. The operator in the back has to, you know, push a button essentially to move the camera to the right place. But for your other answer, yes, we can do that. Other than the equipment failure we had tonight, which is not broadcasting on 21, but you can see that I'm here in chambers and you can see me in both locations and that you as council would not have your own box like I do in Zoom here, you would essentially be seated at the at the dais and they would be able to hear you. So it'd be, it's just a little bit different than what we're doing currently, but it would work. It would meet the definition of a hybrid meeting. It's, and so that's, that was our plan before. We were authorized to move forward with upgrading the equipment. So was to essentially just have a static camera that looks down over the meeting and and then council would sit at their seats. You would have your iPad to use, just like you do now. It would not be connected to Zoom. And when somebody spoke, the camera would zoom in on you and and we would go from there.
Thank you. We have just about five more minutes left. So I don't know if how close we can get to any sort of direction. I know staff was looking for as far as what we should do or the when, more specifically, I think would is will be the helpful thing if we can answer at least for today. I know a question I had kind of prompted that is concerning that. I know a question I had kind of prompted that is concerning that virtual attendance policy, if we are a hybrid in this kind of flux state, I'm assuming we don't need to update the policy in advance of that, as long as there's general agreement from council that we could go forward with that in the meantime, before we actually get to dive into it. So.
Yeah, it was more like after the emergency proclamation is
Okay.
That kind of thing. Yeah.
All right. I see Councilmember Prince, go ahead.
Just for clarity, Mr. President, is this on our agenda for the retreat?
So we would have, we, the return date, I think we're, it looks like potentially we're looking for sooner, although it certainly could be. It's still before the dates we're looking at. So if we don't reach a decision tonight, I'm assuming we would need to.
I only ask because we've got four minutes left.
Yes, sir.
We can make that kind of decision.
Yeah. And if, if people don't feel comfortable that tonight, I, I would certainly.
Need more time to have the thoughtful conversation about it. I don't think we can make it in four minutes.
I think, I think that's a fair evaluation, sir. Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you. Yeah. Just given everything that I've heard tonight, I would, I would lead toward, you know, the beginning of May for in person. I think it gives the project two weeks uninterrupted without us tripping over boxes and it seems that that might answer, in my, in my personal opinion, I just individually, I think that that would answer, check a lot of the more positive boxes for me to, to come back in May. But that's just, I'm just putting that out there.
And I'm happy to provide an update prior to that happening, just to show where we're at in the progress, you know, where the contract has progressed.
All right. Well, I think, oh, Councilmember Prince, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you can, because my fear is with supply chain issues that this can get pushed further back and back. And there are a lot of other councils who are already back in person. Redmond is, Kent is, Sequoia is, and those are just the three that I know off the top of my head. I believe Woodinville is, and not Woodinville, Buffalo is. So trying to get some semblance of normal back sooner than later would be great for me. But I, and my fear is supply chain issues make me worry that we say the beginning of May and then things aren't there and then it's the beginning of June, then, you know, so.
The contractors reassured me that they're doing everything they can to find and salvage and scrape parts up from everywhere they can get them.
I know. We just had a street project though, that we had some issues with as far as delays. So
Oh, I'm.
I don't think it's just, you know.
Your parts are a little tough right now, too.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we were not able to get started earlier. I, I don't, you know, for, for various reasons. So you know, it just took a while to get the contract in place. And then as soon as they started ordering parts, we realized that there's could be some issues with some of the parts coming in on time.
All right, Councilmember Perez?
Mr. President, so you have a longer conversation during this retreat, if possible?
All right, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you, Jason and Christie for the update and information. It really helped me with my informed decision. And I think that we'll probably talk more about it at retreat. But for me, it's just to give the maximum time to the contractors to do work without interruption. And it's just better that way than in and out and just not in delaying the project even more. But appreciate you two for giving us the information.
All right, I'm hearing. Go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you and you know, we can, we can work both ways. We can try to work around the contractor. We can have the contractor work around us and we, we can find a solution.
All right, I am hearing general, general agreements and head nods around the talk about it more at the retreat option. See where things develop between now and then. And I'm generally sensing from staff that'll still give us enough time, assuming it's not like, you know, right after the retreat to, to make that sort of pivot if need be. And we can talk about this more at that point, but very good information. I think very much appreciated and we'll dive into that and more. And including the, the virtual attendance policy at the retreat, certainly a topic worth discussing and we can dwell on that a little bit more. And in the meantime, absorb the information and really dive into it amongst the other topics we're going to discuss there. So any final thoughts from anyone? If not, I think we are all set to adjourn committee, the whole right on time. And we'll reconvene as a full council at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.